We're going to call our meeting to order. I want to thank everybody for being here. Our meeting for December 3rd for the Pickens County Council. You know, as we enter into the Christmas season, we still have to do the business of county, and you guys deem it important to be here, and we really do appreciate that. This time, I'd like to recognize Councilman Wes Hendricks for our invocation and pledge.
Thank you, Lord, for letting us have this opportunity to come together as leaders of county to make decisions and help do things to make our county better, and do things to help the people in our county. Pray, Lord, that you'll help give us wisdom to help us do the things that you would want us to do, to do the things to honor you, to do things in your glory. Pray, Lord, you will be in each and every one of us, here and in audience here tonight, and help guide us, protect us, keep us safe, free from harm and injury. All this be thy will, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to move on to item, or first, our second item, which is public forum. It's your opportunity to give feedback to council on issues that you deem important. As always, we keep this to three minutes, and Madam Clerk, do you have some folks to speak to us?
Mr. Chairman and members of council, I call Gary Marston.
Dual row here. I'd ask for American Legion Post 11 to come up and join me, please. Chairman and council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to come speak with us, speak to you all tonight. We are veterans organization, American Legion Post 11 here in Pickens. We just want to come and thank you, the council, for having the Veterans Day events this past month. We, like I said, a veterans organization, we all served in the military in one capacity or another, but the American Legion motto is for God and country, and we continue serving, and we do that. You'll see us at different locations, Walmarts, Isaiah Fest, taking donations, but those donations, we put back into the community. A lot of our disabled veterans, we will, we provided a handicap ramps for them, we helped pay electric bills, bought food for them, and different things like that. But we also, one of our biggest projects is helping our youth, and we send students, boys and girls, to Boys State, Girls State every year from Pickens High School. We also send a student to the law academy. So we're continuously serving our community, our public, but when someone serves us, like y'all did with the Veterans Day events, we just want to come and say thank you. And with that, we would like to, get my place. American Legion has given the county council a certificate of appreciation. This certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to Pickens County Council, Pickens, South Carolina, in recognition and some dear appreciation of outstanding service and assistance which contributed to the advancement of American Legion programs and activities dedicated to God and country, presented by American Legion Post 11 Pickens Department of South Carolina, third day of December. And again, we just want to thank y'all. And if you don't mind, we'd like to present this certificate.
Roy. Can you trade him? You can trade him? Thank you very much. We know what it is, and it is an honor to watch you guys, and how you serve, the things you do. This is, this is really incredible and extraordinary. Thank you so much to have the whole council, not only for your service and what you do, but for helping make things like our Veterans Day and the parade and everything else possible. It was an extraordinary event, and you could have done very well. And I've got, I guess these are the coins, the stuff back to coins that they're going to give out to everybody, in celebration of 150 year anniversary, Sessquas Centennial. There we go. So we'll give you guys the coins, and then I'll pass this on to these guys. Thank y'all so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Questions? I have to say, that's the first time in the public forum we've come down to accept a recognition. That was very nice. Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk?
Brad Weaver.
been having for the last two years in my residence. A nearby neighbor owns a race car, and he has woken up me and my family four times. One has been after 8:00 p.m., which was not so bad, but I had a four-month-old child, and my six-year-old was four at the time, woke both of them up. And the car has no mufflers of any kind, no way to muffle that sound. It travels directly out of his garage, across his pond, directly into the three bedrooms of my home, and he's been asked multiple times to stop. Sheriff's Office has gone to visit him three times. The fourth and final time he did it was on November 20th at 10:41 p.m. And I'm just not going to bother to call Sheriff's Office. I just didn't bother, because there's no ordinance in this county, countywide, to do anything about it. The individual has said he's going to continue to do it without, you know, until he's fine. I've even spoken to an attorney, and attorney said to come and address council and the sheriff's office to get some sort of assistance, but, you know, I've got a similar neighbor nearby, Marty Ward, that raced at Grand Pickens Speedway for years. He's an older gentleman, never bothered the community with such a thing at such hours of the night, and this individual's a lot younger, and the courtesy and the respect's just not there with that individual. And I'm asking either the sheriff's office to use some sort of fine that they can issue on books to that individual for continually doing it, or council to pass some sort of countywide noise ordinance, just like our three neighboring counties, they all have one. And Oconee specifically addresses that type of vehicle with no mufflers of any kind, especially during the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And the only time he's done it prior to 10:00 p.m. is once, which was 8:17. But on March 11 of 16, it was 11:36 p.m. 8:15-16 was the 8:17 p.m. 7:817 is 12:30 a.m. He did that one for a full half hour until 1:00 a.m., constantly revving that car, that automobile. And the most recent was November 20th, at 10:41 p.m. So he's basically, I've talked to his mother-in-law, I've talked to a lot of people, even someone he used to work for, but he is just, he is not going to stop until he's fine. He's made that absolutely clear to me. So, you know, I asked council and sheriff's office to do something about it. If not, I'm going to have to get an attorney involved, or otherwise, I'm just going to sell my property and leave Pickens County, and go to a county that will work for me to stop this.
Thank you.
Alex Sainka. I watched the August and September meetings and was disappointed you chose not to move the chapel to the new jail. I understand it's the sheriff's job to bring the security point of view to the table, the finance department's job to talk about the cost, but it's your job to bring the community viewpoint to the table, and you failed miserably. Right off the bat, you were downing the idea of moving the chapel. I mean, you have to see the bigger picture here. We're in a cultural war, and we're losing badly. Our traditions, our values, our sense of right and wrong are all under attack, and leaders like you are just finding reasons to step aside, and I saw it throughout those meetings and those videotapes. I mean, go back and listen to the tapes. Look at your reasoning for not moving the chapel. You sounded like the ACLU. It's sad that a Yankee like me has to be the one to stand up for traditional southern values that are being attacked from all sides. Trust me, when the loony liberals come down here, and the people from Greenville with their anything goes morals start to move in here, it's going to be like Locust. I've seen it. You haven't. The way things are going now, 25 years from now, you're not going to recognize the county you grew up in. You need to find the will and the backbone to stand up and defend the values and traditions of Pickens County, as well as the conservative South. Also, I'm sure you're aware that 137 voters in Pickens County in Dakersville were handed ballots on Election Day that didn't include the school board race. The election was protested, and it looks like we're getting a new election. Mistakes were made from incorrectly programming some machines to handing out incomplete ballots. They were mistakes anybody could have made, but there was so much on the line that such mistakes cannot be made because there's no good remedy to fix them. If officials accepted the votes as they were on Election Day, 137 people would have been denied their vote in the school board race. If you do have a do-over election, about 400 people are going to vote, mostly family and friends, and the 3,500 that voted on Election Day, their votes are not going to count. I know you don't have an, you don't have authority in this process, but you paid for this mess, and you're going to have to pay to fix it. Therefore, you have a responsibility, particularly US, as well as you call, you represent those areas, and you're going to, you're going to need to step up and push to uncover what went wrong, why it went wrong, who was responsible, and what steps need to be taken to ensure it doesn't happen again. And I don't mean doing all this privately, below the radar, in the back rooms. It's a public election, very public mistakes, and the public needs to know about what's going on. You all said you were leaders. Now lead. Lead publicly. You're public officials now. You're not just private citizens anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, this concludes the public forum.
Are you going to answer that? You going to answer that?
Actually, we did put in our policy that we could, if you, would you like to address that?
Well, let's talk about the room now. But just to say that we have addressed the deal with the problems with the voter issues, and we've talked with our state delegation, we saw that there was a problem. We, we don't like the problem any more than anybody else. We are required to fund voter elections, but under state law, we have no control over it. So I don't know really what Mr. Sada wants us to do. We can, we can bring it to our elected officials and the voter board, elections board, and then it's their responsibility. It's not ours. If it was ours, I can assure you, we'd do what we needed to do. The other issue, you know, I don't know how to address that. I've talked to people in my district and asked them about the chapel, and I'm a Christian. I go to church about every time the door's open. And to say that I don't care about Christianity in the US community, you've got to be deaf and dumb. I do care about it, but the other thing is this, this chapel is a different issue. The sheriff has said that it's an issue of security. I was in law enforcement. I know he is right. I know he's right. It's a security. It's not that he doesn't want to promote Christianity in the detention center. That's not it. But you have, it's not, he said, he made a good point. He said it's a detention center. It's not a church. It's a detention center. We're going to provide a room for chaplains to come in and, and spread the word of God. They'll have, they'll have that there, but it will be in a secure facility. And the other thing about it, it's been talked about how much money it's going to cost to move that chapel from, from the stockade out here, and we're looking at close to a quarter of a million dollars by the time. They have to tear that thing down, take all the power lines down, and bring it out here. So just to make a statement like that and get up and run out the room, I think that's more political than anything else.
And one thing I would like to address as well, and I want to give credit where credit is not due, but those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat it. I'm in the schools, I teach school, we've lost two schools under a certain leadership, improper funding under somebody else's leadership. Also, the ACLU issue, that was an issue within our school district too, and I would like to commend my peers up here for doing a great job in saving taxpayer money, because that's a hot button with some people, and I think we did a pretty good job for us to save money, not move a building that the sheriff says we won't use, that saved a quarter million dollars. Also, we saved no ton of how much money in a lawsuit by avoiding a certain situation that was mentioned. So, you know, I'd like to commend you guys. I think we did a pretty good job of saving the taxpayers a lot of money in some decisions we made, and that was just addressed.
Thank you. I, you know, I do want to say, I will say this, I'm, when you look at our values and for people to be upset and talking about it, I think that's a great thing. However, I will go back to what I said, and not be theological about this, but the church is not a building. The church is the people. We had that conversation. So with that, I want to go ahead and move on to item number three, approval of minutes. I know you guys have gotten a copy of the minutes from November 5th, 2018 meeting. Ask for a motion approving the minutes.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers. Second by Councilman, theme, sir, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if you would, page seven and page eight, under the ordinances for Project Pine and Project Oblano, just a grammatical, if you will, error. It should be motion carried 5-1 for both of those, with Councilman Hendricks opposed on both of those, instead of 5-0.
Okay. Do we need to make an amendment?
Just get a second for the amendment.
Second by Councilman Hendricks, any discussion on the amendment on the minutes? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Now, all those, any further discussion on the minutes in its entirety? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and motion carries. Very good. Item number four, administrative report. Chair recognizes county administrator Joe Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. First, I'd like to let you know that we have got a, oh, if that's too loud for you or not?
Not ever too loud. Go ahead.
We actually, you had asked about an employee engagement survey a few weeks ago. That has actually been sent out to all the employees. We'll be bringing results back to council sometime in January, but went out Friday afternoon about 2:00. As of today, we already had 141 employees respond to this, to the surveys, which is great. Next, I'd like to let council know that government offices will be closed December 24th and 25th of the Christmas holidays. As you're aware, our recycle stations are normally closed on Wednesdays. The 25th is on a Tuesday. With council permission, we'd like to open the stations on Wednesday and advertise to the public due to the, due to the load of trash that comes in there in those days, that we actually open the facilities that day just for that cause there. Next, I'm going to ask Jamie to step up. Jamie's going to kind of brief council on all the Christmas activities going on with our Sesquicentennial Parade and our Christmas market.
Good evening. So this weekend begins the Haygood Mill Christmas Market. It's the first time that they've ever done that. It'll kick off on Friday night. They plan to start with the Appalachian Holiday is going to be the theme for this Friday and Saturday. They'll have carolers, bonfires, hot chocolate vendors, where you can come and buy local, unique gifts from local artisans. That'll continue next weekend as well. They're going to do it the 14th and 15th, and they will have, on the 15th, they will do a send-off for Santa to send him back to the North Pole. They'll have a parade to send him off, and carols as he heads back to the North Pole. And, and so I wanted to mention also, they're doing something really unique out there. As you know, we have our Sesquicentennial Parade coming up on the 14th, but they're doing a unique hillbilly parade this Saturday at 3:00. So basically, anything that wouldn't be allowed in a traditional parade, you'll be able to bring out there. They said walk it, drag it, pull it, whatever. If it wouldn't traditionally be allowed in a parade, plan to bring it, or just walk in it and wear your hillbilly clothing. They really want to do something different to include people that wouldn't ordinarily be able to bring all their oddities into a parade. So we think that's going to be a really fun and unique event. And then, of course, I want to mention the time capsule burial, which will be after the Sesquicentennial Parade in downtown Pickens on the 14th, which is next Saturday. We're accepting submissions from the public to go into the capsule through this Friday at 5:00. We've tried to get the word out in several different ways. We've been on a couple of TV stations and several publications and things like that. So we're really trying to make sure that everybody knows about it. We're asking that they bring their submissions in nine-by-12 or smaller envelopes, and that they just stay away from things like liquids, perishables, weapons, obviously, sharp objects like glass, things that won't hold up well for the next 50 years, and that instead, they look to do things like letters either to their ancestors or future residents of Pickens County, but that they write them in graphite pencil or print it on premium paper, something that might hold up well, family photos and family memorabilia, and then for businesses, any kind of like business memento that they may have that they'd like to put in there.
Very good. Thank you very much for all your work.
Excuse me, can you talk a little?
About the Christmas parade, encouraging folks to dress as though they did in 1968 and as well as 1868, and the coins.
Yes. Thank you, Councilman Hendricks, for reminding me of that. Yeah, so we're asking everybody to come in their period costumes, either from the 1860s or the 1960s, and if you're not sure what they dress like, try to take a good guess at that. But, but dress in your period costumes, and then we're going to have a limited number of Sesquicentennial challenge coins to give out to people who come and participate wearing their period costumes. So we want to make that a big part of it, and also, the city of Pickens has, they've kind of partnered with us on the parade, and they've waived all entry fees for what would be their ordinary Christmas parade that they have, that they usually charge a fee for, and they're also adding on an award this year for the best adaptation of the Sesquicentennial theme. So in addition to their first, second, and third place, they really want to encourage people to come out and, and do the period costumes, and also the period floats, and really get into that theme and see who can pull it off the best.
We hope all council can come out and be part of that, members of the public as well. After the parade, there'll be music on steps of the courthouse, kind of a little festival, festival of sorts there as we bury the time council. Lastly, I just wanted to wish council a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, as well as the public, for myself and the staff of Pickens County. We appreciate everything you do for us. Be glad to entertain any questions you may have this time.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe this is something that Ken can help me out. I'm trying to remember, when we came up with our gun ordinance for gun ranges that we worked on, did we not have a noise portion to that that tied into a noise ordinance for Pickens County?
I don't remember anything specifically about that, but I'll be glad to look into that.
Can we, can we, because we may have something already on the books about a noise. Well, I know we had a lot of discussion about it, and I'm thinking there's something somewhere, but could you guys do some research?
Chris, do you? We got Mr. Brink in the audience, I'm not sure if he remembers.
Do you remember that?
We will actually have you answer tomorrow sometime.
Remember, we discussed, that was one of the parameters in doing it, and we tied it into something, and I may be wrong, I'm, my aged memory's not perfect.
If we put anything in there, it's probably limited to two firearms itself.
I thought we tied it into something we had for noise.
Yeah, we don't have a normal noise ordinance for this reservation, so that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, so we can, we'll find out what we have in that, as to levels and stuff like that, and maybe we can figure out a way to.
We'll find out tomorrow what we have, and maybe an item you want to send to the planning commission for review.
I think that's a good idea.
You think we have to generate it here?
I'm going to do it in motion period, any business?
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item number six, council correspondence. The committee that holds meets Thursday, December 13th at 6:00 p.m. in the main conference room of this facility. She's, Jamie's already mentioned a lot about the excitement of the time capsule, of the Sesquicentennial Parade. I did want to mention on the Sesquicentennial Parade, all of the high school marching bands are going to march in this parade, and I want to understand, it's been a long time since that's ever happened, so I thought that was pretty exciting. Is there any other correspondence that needs to be announced? All right, we'll move on to motion period and new business. I would like to make a couple of motions. One, I'd like to make a motion to look into the ordinances that exist on noise and send that to the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman, theme, sir, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. That motion carries. I'd also like to make a motion, just so that we're all clear on this, that we direct staff to open the recycle center on the Wednesday after Christmas.
Second that.
Second by Councilman Bowers, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. That motion carries.
We'll advertise it locally, please, as well as people.
That'd be great, that we're doing. Councilman Whitehurst?
I'd like to make a motion to add two resolutions to the agenda that we can take up following the motion period. One, 2018-19 Daniel High School Girls Cross Country Team, and 2018-20 Daniel Girls High School Golf Team.
Second that.
Motion by Councilman Whitehurst, second by Councilman Hendricks, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and that motion carries. Is there any other new business? All right, seeing none, we're going to add this, excuse me, resolution in as, I guess, 7 dash 5, how about that? 7.5, right in the middle.
Right in the middle.
Yeah. We, we'd like to ask the Daniel High School Girls Cross Country Team if they would come forward. Y'all can just stand here while we vote on this, too. I need a motion in a second that we approved resolution 2018-19, congratulating the Daniel High School Girls Cross Country Team for winning the 4A state scholarship, a championship gift.
Motion as you.
Motion by Councilman Whitehurst, second by Councilman Hendricks.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, theme, sir, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Sure.
Motion carries. We'd like to come out there and read this with you guys.
All this is written in that script. This is, whereas Pickens County is the home of Daniel High School Public Second Degree School offering excellent education and training opportunities to our citizens, whereas in relationship with Principal Shannon Sharkey, Athletic Director Dr. Tommy Hungley, Daniel High School has established a premier cross-country program, including a girls' cross-country team that has won numerous competitions and titles. And whereas this season, under the direction of Coach Ashley Pinnery, the girls' cross-country team continued its tradition of dominant success. And whereas the South Carolina State Championship will be held at Sandhills Research Center in Columbia, South Carolina, on November 3rd, 2018, the Daniel High School Girls Cross Country captured the state 4A championship. And whereas Pickens County recognizes the hard work and exemplary performance of the students and staff of Daniel High School, and is appreciative of the fine representation the girls' cross-country team made for all of Pickens County, now therefore, it will be resolved that Pickens County Council and recognition of outstanding achievement that brings honor to our county, as well as Daniel High School, does hereby congratulate the Daniel High School Girls Cross Country Team for winning the 2018 state 4A championship.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, the girls could be in the middle, and then y'all can have a flight. We're going to walk up here and walk up in.
Reach over the top.
I know, it's, I would say, the quiz on that just is easy.
We can sit down and make it all official.
All right, make it. I need a motion in a second on the 2018-20 Daniel High Girls Golf Team.
So moved as written?
Motion by Councilman Whitehurst, second by Councilman Hendricks. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and motion carries. Now, we'd like to invite the Daniel High School Girls Golf Team.
So this is a lot better than running. This is a resolution congratulating the Daniel High School Girls Golf Team for winning the 4A state championship. Whereas Pickens County is the home of Daniel High School Public Secondary School offering excellent education and training opportunities to our citizens. And whereas under leadership of Principal Shannon Sharkey, Athletic Director Dr. Tommy Hungley, Daniel High School has established a highly competitive golf program, including a girls' golf team that has won numerous competitions. Whereas this season, under the direction of Coach Andy Swords, the girls' golf team had unprecedented success. And whereas in the South Carolina State Golf Tournament held at Coastal Carroll University on October 22nd, 23rd, 2018, the Daniel High School Girls Golf Team captured the state 4A championship, Daniel High School's first state title in girls' golf. And whereas Pickens County recognizes the hard work and exemplary performance of the students and staff of Daniel High School and is appreciative of the fine representation the girls' golf team made for all of Pickens County. Now therefore, it will be resolved that Pickens County Council and recognition of outstanding achievement that brings honor to our county as well as Daniel High School is hereby congratulating the Daniel High School Girls Golf Team for winning the 2018 state 4A championship.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I will say this, I think that we seem to be doing that a lot with the high school kids in this county.
That's awesome to do that. And one other note I might add, second place for the golf was Pickens High School. So they beat a very good team to win it all. But we've got a lot to be proud of. Easley High Band, an outstanding job, very proud of them. Pickens High School Band, of course, Daniel High School, doing what they've done. And two teams, that's awesome. That is awesome. Congratulations to y'all.
Mr. Chairman, I know it's totally out of context, but since Councilman Hendricks spoke, I feel like I should, too. I had the privilege of speaking with Easley Band today. And I told them, you know, you don't realize when they're going out and outside the county and representing so well, it makes our job a lot easier, and we're very blessed, we really are.
Absolutely. Moving on to item number eight, presentation of the fiscal year 2018 comprehensive annual financial report. Mr. Ralph?
No.
No, who's doing this? Okay.
Mr. Allen Robinson with Chair Beckett here presenting our final.
All right, we've got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Allen Robinson. And on behalf of our CBA firm, Cherry Beckert, and my team, Mary Peaslee and Ron Conrad, we're here to present tonight the June 30, 2018 comprehensive annual financial report. The audit reflects a clean or an unmodified opinion. There are no findings or exceptions or issues cited in the audit. The audit is concluded and presented as a final document. You received an email version of it last week. The printed copies have been distributed tonight. I do very much like to point out on page five, that you'll see the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence. This is a national award that's applied for and graded by a blind judge. We don't even know from where. It's probably about a 50-page checklist that we go through to, with Ralph and his team, to get that. It's a big deal. It's well received in the bond markets and in the financial markets. So I'd just like to point that out. I'm not going to go through any of the details of the 130-page financial statement that is the Pickens County financials. I would like to thank Ralph Guarino and Jody Laws and his team for getting us in and out on time and on schedule. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have about any of the financial statements.
Any questions?
Not for you.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Of our administrator. There was a couple of recommendations that these guys had given.
Yes, sir.
And there were a couple of things in here. Are y'all, are we going to?
Yes, we are. We wrapped up about this as well.
Is that something that we need to tell you guys to implement that, or is that just something we're now going to?
We actually have to go to the now and talk about that.
Something about the IT stuff with access and then the, some of the auditing issue, a couple of little things like that. You've got putting procedures in place. Just, I figured you were. I just wanted to follow up.
Take this.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number nine, Consumer Energy Alliance. This time, Chair recognizes Tim Page, Southeast Regional Director for Consumer Energy Alliance.
Thank you, Chairman Costner, and thank you, council, for having us here tonight. Just want to recognize my colleague, Kevin Doyle, who also works with us. And he's going to say a few words, and then we're going to do a PowerPoint here, and then we'll take questions.
Great. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. Yes, sir. And is there a way to, is there a clicker or anything like that, or we just go down? Perfect. Awesome. I work with Tim Page at Consumer Energy Alliance. We do a lot of work, I personally, in Florida, Georgia, and the Carolinas. We, CEA, are a national nonprofit that advocates reliable, affordable energy policy for small families, for businesses, manufacturers, for farmers. And we do a lot of work with state legislatures, the federal government, local commissioners like yourselves, to make sure that the message that, and all the above energy policy that advocates for that reliable, affordable energy supply gets to our elected officials to ensure that we don't do anything that has a negative impact on the folks that are least likely to be able to absorb that impact. Because a lot of times, you know, decisions that are made outside of where we live have a negative impact. Where I am in Florida, for example, we don't produce any energy on our own, but yet we consume a lot of energy. So if something bad were to happen with supply or with affordability has a negative impact to our economy. So we do stuff across the country. Like I said, Tim covers the Carolinas. And we'd like to make sure that we talk, to make sure we talk on behalf of the average consumer, the average family, the average small business person. So, next slide. So I'll give you a kind of a little overview. You know, we advocate for all the above energy policy. We believe in renewables. We believe in natural gas. We believe in oil. We believe in nuclear. We believe in coal. We think that we can't afford to say no to anything in the United States. You know, with the world economy growing at a fast clip, you know, India, China, other countries are also using a lot of energy. So we have to be able to say yes to energy options and to be able to do it in a way that's environmentally sound, but also doesn't disrupt the economy either. In 2008, a couple of facts. You know, the United States petroleum consumption was almost 20 million barrels a day, and we only produced about 6.8 million barrels a day. Oil prices reached 140, almost $150 a barrel, and gasoline reached $4 a gallon, which I remember, a lot of us remember from driving around how hard it was to fill up our tanks and to pay electric bills and things like that. And just a decade later, you know, how things have changed with the American energy revolution, you know, we consume just a little bit more than 20 million barrels. So efficiency's definitely been something that's been an improvement on the United States. We produce, you know, nearly two-thirds what we consume now. So we, as a country, are able then to kind of dictate the terms of how we use and secure our energy supplies. In today's world, where you have countries like Venezuela, which is imploding, and you see what's happening with Russia, you know, and the situation with the Ukraine, and how they use energy as a kind of a political tool. You see what's happening, you know, in different spots of the world that may not like us as much. If we can kind of take that power away from those areas of the world and do it here in the United States, it helps. You know, as you can see, the price of, you know, oil per barrel is now $51 a barrel. Gasoline is down to $2.55. I saw a gas station on the way to Pickens tonight for $1.99, which was pretty awesome to see. So the fact that we're able to control that, and in the past, when you'd see a skirmish with Iran or a skirmish with Venezuela, you'd see our prices spike, and now that's not the case as much anymore. So that, having that stability is great for our businesses, is great for our families, great for our consumers, is great for America across the board. So, next slide. So again, the dramatic increase in energy production, in natural gas and oil, has been a great contributor to the U.S. economy. You know, 10.3 million jobs in the United States are supported by the energy sector, especially in oil and natural gas, and contributes to over $1.3 trillion to the U.S. economy, which also results in about $6 billion in direct revenues in the United States federal government, one of the largest revenue suppliers outside of federal income tax. So being able to reduce that reliance, again, on OPEC and other places, again, puts our country in a position where we can determine our own future. And we currently have an administration in Washington that is advocating for an American energy first policy that, while we definitely support, because at the end of the day, if we can determine our own energy future, I think it's best for our economy and best for our local residents. So with that said, I'd like to bring back up Tim Page, talk about some of the next steps and some of the process that the administration is doing in Washington, and some of the positive impacts it would have in South Carolina.
Thanks, Kevin. And so as he said, I'll reiterate, the American first energy policy that the Trump administration is doing a good job to implement has obviously stabilized fuel prices. As you see, we're still importing about 10.4 million barrels of petroleum products per day. And I think we could all agree that it would be better for us to do more here on American soil and not have to depend on other countries. You know, we just, you've probably seen the news lately, we just became the number one producer in the world. That's a huge step in, you know, for our energy here in America. And, you know, just to keep going forward with that and to keep broadening our energy portfolio is what's best for the energy consumer. So in this, I also want to, you know, keep in mind that we're talking a lot about offshore energy here today. And when we talk about that, we're not just talking about oil. We're also talking about natural gas. And I think most people would agree that natural gas is one of the most clean sources of energy there is. And so I don't know if everyone's seen it, but the Trump administration today actually approved some permits to do some seismic surveying in the Atlantic, which is a huge step forward in this process. Any data that we've had is over 30 years old from what we have today. And so, you know, we look back at, you know, in the 70s or early 80s when we lasted seismic surveying. And, you know, you look at the, you look at how far technology has came, you know, I always like to point to my cellphone. Where were cellphones 10 years ago? Where were cellphones five years ago? Well, that just shows, you know, how much better, you know, technology has got over the last couple of years and decades. And that, you know, to be able to go out and see what we actually do have out there is a huge step in, you know, in this whole process. Can you go to the next slide, please, sir? This just shows like the areas across the nation that are open for offshore drilling for natural gas and oil. These are the different sections of the country. In the current plan that the Trump administration has proposed, all but one section was included. It's the largest proposed plan that's ever been in the history of, since the Department of Interior has been doing this. And South Carolina is in the South Atlantic, as you can see up there. If you go to the next slide, please, sir. So here, talks a little bit more about what we're talking about here. The Outer Continental Shelf is where we want to do this. South Carolina on zero to three miles out, and that's state waters. Obviously, there's no drilling that would want to be done there at all. The federal waters go from three to 200 miles, and then 200 plus is the international waters. Every five years, the Department of Interior puts out a Outer Continental Shelf Lands Act that establishes the next five years of oil and gas leasing program. And as I said, this is the most comprehensive plan that they put out. So in the, the Obama administration did a last hour plan that they put in 2017 to 2022, which the Trump administration came in and said, well, we want to, we want to do a new plan. We want to see what we can, we can figure out, since they did this in the last hour. The Obama administration said there will be no leasing in the Atlantic. So, you know, as it says, they're limited to just 6% of our nation's federal waters to actually see what we have there. You know, this, the whole point here is to keep the conversation going. You know, this is not to say, you know, if we say there's going to be, we're going to go forward with this plan, that doesn't mean we're going to have any sort of activity in, off the coast of South Carolina tomorrow. This is a long, comprehensive plan. Can you go to the next slide, please? If you look here on South Carolina right there, it's in the South Atlantic. It shows that there will be leasing proposed plans in 2020, 2022, and 2024. That's the current plan. If you can go to the next slide, please. If you look at the red line there, that's the proposed 25-mile buffer, which means there would be no possibility of any testing or any drilling of any kind in that. That's proposed. That's something they're taking in public comment. Then the rest, you can see, goes out to 200 miles. Next slide, please. So this right here will show you the process that the Department of Interior has to go through. As you can see, it's a very, very comprehensive process they have to go through. They have to, there's so many different comment periods. And then, once we get through the comment period, and then we have, let's just say that they did actually approve us to do some kind of drilling or leasing plans in the Atlantic. Then we have to go through what is the post lease, which there's so many reviews, there's so many permits that you have to get. So in showing you this, it's to say, this is just about keeping the conversation going. If we were to take the Atlantic out now, then it's not going to go back in until they start the new five-year process. Once it comes out, it cannot go back in. So it's very important to keep the Atlantic in through this process to at least see what we do have off of our coast, to see if it's even worth going. You know, as you guys go forward tonight, and I believe you may consider a resolution tonight on this, I ask you to think about what is, what is going to be here for South Carolina. You know, the economy here, it could propose a study that was put in months ago. BP of around $2.5 billion, 2.1 billion in new annual spending in South Carolina. So just a few quick facts. The average South Carolinian spends $3,600 a year on energy. That's a third of most citizens here's income. 14.9% of Pickens County residents living in poverty. As my colleague Kevin said, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing what's best for the consumer. There are people in parts of Pickens County across the state that are not as fortunate as a lot of other folks that are here. And a lot of us that are here tonight. And, you know, we don't want to see fuel prices go up again or electric bills. And we don't want, we don't want families to have to choose between going to the grocery store or filling up their vehicle or keeping the heat on. I know we had a nice day today, but there's cold weather coming, and we, you know, we want to make sure people can afford all energy. The Obama administration, just on the environment, they actually said in a study they did that seismic surveying and offshore does not have a negative impact on the coastal economies or sea life. They actually said- You know, the economy here, it could propose a study that was put in months ago. BP of around $2.5 billion. 2.1 billion in new annual spending in South Carolina. So just a few quick facts. The average South Carolinian spends $3,600 a year on energy. That's a third of most citizens here's income. 14.9% of Pickens County residents living in poverty. As my colleague Kevin said, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing what's best for the consumer. There are people in, in parts of Pickens County across the state that are not as fortunate as a lot of other folks that are here, and a lot of us that are here tonight. And, you know, we don't want to see fuel prices go up again or electric bills. And we don't want, we don't want families to have to choose between going to the grocery store or filling up their vehicle or keeping the heat on. I know we had a nice day today, but there's cold weather coming, and we, you know, we want to make sure people can afford all energy. The Obama administration, just on the environment, they actually said in a study they did that seismic surveying and offshore does not have a negative impact on the coastal economies or sea life. They actually said that we would actually have a net environmental cost if we do not at least see what we do have out there and, and go to understand more about what there is to offer there. If you go to the next slide, please. So just, just to wrap up here, again, this is mostly about keeping the conversation going. We want to make sure that South Carolina does have the opportunity to understand what we do have. I think you guys, as a council, would never take this, if you had a business coming into Pickens County here, you would never say, no, I don't want to hear anything about what you have to offer. I don't want to know what you got, what you have coming to Pickens County. I don't want to know how much money or how many jobs or how many people it could bring here. I don't think you would say that. I think you would say, yes, I want to have a seat at the table and at least understand what there is to offer. And then, after we understand what there is to offer, let's have an educated conversation and see what we want to do from there. And that's all we're asking tonight. We're asking that you, when you consider this resolution, that you think about that and know that this is a long process and we have a long way to go, and we just want to keep the conversation going. So again, my name's Tim Page, Executive Director of the Southeastern Consumer Energy Alliance. Contact information is there. I want to thank Megan for her help throughout this and scheduling and getting everything done here, and we really appreciate it. If there's any questions, we'll take those now.
What, how many counties have you presented this plan to in South Carolina?
We have, we have been to, on the county level, I think, a few, three or four different counties across. We've done a lot of work with state legislators. State Representative Dave Hyatt is here as well. We've worked with him a lot on this, and we've talked to a lot of representatives. We are working this hard. There's a lot of, there's a lot of ground to cover. And, you know, mostly, we're trying to educate folks on what this is. So, and what, there's so much negative stuff out there that people hear, and that we were trying to get the facts out there for people. So we're very early in getting this, all our information out there, but we are working hard every day to make that happen.
And this is just exploring what could be there, correct?
Exactly.
And can you tell the people who makes that final call?
Yeah.
Black says, hey, go drill.
Yeah. So the final call will be made by the Department of Interior in Washington, D.C. The reason why we are here, to make, make sure that is clear, is that, you know, the administration was not, would not want to do anything without hearing local voices. And, you know, we're in Pickens County, South Carolina, so we're obviously not on the coast of South Carolina, and people may ask, well, why are you here? Well, the point is, is as my colleague said, that energy just doesn't affect the coast. Where you produce energy just doesn't affect where it is produced, you know. Just because we're in western South Carolina doesn't mean that we don't consume energy every day. So what happens in, off of the coast of South Carolina or in other parts of the country still affects the people here. So to answer your question more, Department of Interior will make that final decision, but they do want to hear from local folks, and that's, that's why we're here, to chat with you guys tonight.
And if they decide to go ahead and drill, can you tell who pays for the drilling?
Yeah, so this will be a lease sale. And so different companies, natural gas companies, local companies, energy companies, will be able to bid on the leases that would, they would, that are available. And once they, those are, all the, all the, that's what I'm looking for here. Sorry. The...
Entities.
Yes. Once all their, their bids are in, that's what I'm looking for. Once their bids are in, sorry, they will be able to look at everything and see who they're going to go with, and then ultimately, the energy company will pay for the drilling. Now, if you, as you see the resolution, in states that there are drilling, which is in the Gulf, there are, they do what is called revenue sharing. I'm sure you've heard of that. And that is something that will be, once we have this, where, once the plan has went forward, and they, if they do say that the Atlantic will be open, then we'll talk about revenue sharing, and there will be, Congress will have the opportunity to decide whether they want to put forth a bill to have revenue sharing. Consumer Energy Alliance, we support that fully, and we'll work hard to get that done. But I think that is a big part in, in getting this done, is making sure that the states have the revenue sharing. And the current rate, as you can see in that, is 37.5% of the revenues will go directly to the state. The rest will go to the, the companies, and it'll be a revenue share, so.
You're saying that here, the state and the coastal counties?
Say it again.
That's what your resolution says.
Yes.
Is that this goes to the state and the coastal counties?
Right. Well, it goes to, it goes to the whole state, but the coastal counties will see part of the, you know, the revenue.
Will the state counties see any part of it?
Say it again.
Will the upstate counties?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it all, this all depends on how Congress will write this, and that'll be something that we'll look at when we get to the point of having the plan where the Atlantic would be included. But that'll be something that we would push for, I think, in the other states where it is right now. Every part of the state sees, and that'll be up to the state government too, and the state legislature to decide on where they go from there.
So really, to put it in the simplest of forms, it is, you're asking for us to say, we think it's a good idea for you guys to go out and look and see what's there.
Yeah.
And if you find something and you pay to go look and see what's there, whoever, whatever company you are, then we'll talk about it.
Right.
Our hope is if it's something like natural gas, and if it's something like oil, then it's something we can talk about.
Right. And what we're trying to say is, like you said, we just want to keep the conversation going. You know, if you say, no, we do not support this, that is basically saying that we don't want to hear anything more about this. If we do go forward to this, we really don't care about any revenue shares that could come or any benefits that could come our way. So yes, this is strictly to say, hey, we do want to have a seat at the table and at least have a voice in the matter to understand what is there and what we want to do going forward, once we have been able to explore.
Mr. Page mentioned working with the state delegations and with Congress. You've all got a letter from Congressman Duncan in your packet. I also want to recognize Representative Hyatt. Thank you for being here. Did you want to say anything in regards to the idea of looking at, exploring this possibility?
You gotta get up.
I did not plan on saying anything, but I will speak to this. Last June, June of 2017, Speaker Lucas instructed me, as Chairman of the House Agriculture, Natural Resources, Environmental Affairs Committee, to form a, form a committee to study offshore drilling in South Carolina. And I appointed 10 members of the legislature to study this project for six months. We had over 10 hearings, heard from people such as this, a lot of coastal, coastal folks. The BoEEM folks, I think you might have seen the B-O-E-M acronym up there, they came in from Washington. I met with Energy Secretary Zinski, Donald Trump's Energy Secretary, Mr. Zinski, myself The Speaker instructed me to come back with a yes or a no on what the plans were of the feelings of the committee. I can tell you, at the end of the six months, we came back with a deadlock. It was intentional that I put five members from the coast and five members not from the coast, because I understand the concerns of the coasts. And so my intentions were to see if we could come up with some agreement dividing it equally. And I'll tell you that those five members of the coast probably would have shot somebody if we'd have come back with a, we're going to do something. I'll, I'll, I'll tell you that as a, as a citizen of South Carolina, having been 38 years since we've been out there to find out what's going on, as a taxpayer and as a citizen of South Carolina, I think it's our right to know what's out there. Now, drilling and all that is a whole nother story. People get it confused. They think if you give a permit to allow somebody to explore, they're going to get the same permit to drill. That is not the case. You've got to have a separate permit to, to explore as well as to drill, and you've got to go through the, you've got to go through the same hoops that you did to get that permit to explore, as you, and there's even more hoops to jump through to get a drilling permit. And a lot of people are confused, and I think there were some folks that rode that negativity in their opinion, that they thought that that was, if they got this one permit, then they could go out and do whatever they wanted to do. And I completely understand that, but I can assure you that what these gentlemen are asking you to do tonight, they say, let's keep the conversation going. And at the end of the day, as I told Councilman Hendricks today, as he called me, at the end of the day, if President Trump decides to go out and explore for oil or natural gas or whatever's out there, if he decides to go drill tomorrow, there's nothing you can do, and there's nothing I can do to stop him, because he's going to be in international waters. He's got the authority to send somebody out there right now to do that, if he chooses to do that. And I think he's doing the right thing by involving the states that are, that are impacted by this. And I, I think it's, I think it's good that we hear from all sides, from the, from the mountains to the, to the coast. And Trey, you're exactly right. I think the upstate needs to hear from them. I think the coastal needs to hear our opinions. We need to hear their opinions. And so he, they're, what they're asking you here tonight is not, not out of line, very reasonable, and they're, they're not putting you on the hook for anything, and they're just simply saying, hey, look, do you think the conversation ought to continue?
Thank you, Representative Hyatt. Any other questions for Representative Hyatt or Mr. Page? I'd like to make a motion that we accept this resolution. Do I need, now I guess I need to read this. Mr. [inaudible]. Yeah, okay, it's up there, I'll read it. Whereas all Pickens County residents deserve access to affordable and reliable energy and the state deserves equal access to investments that lead to tax revenues and provide essential services such as hospitals, roads, and emergency services in schools. And whereas a comprehensive, America First energy policy can ensure long-term, affordable energy that provides an economic boost to families and businesses across the county and state, including those who are facing unemployment and more than 15% of the South Carolinas who are living in poverty. And whereas the nation's offshore energy resources are a part, are a critical part of an American first energy policy with the potential for Atlantic conventional energy alone to provide South Carolina with an abundant supply of domestic energy, grow the state's economy by nearly $2.5 billion, generate over 33,000 new jobs, provide more than $3.8 billion in state revenue for coastal enhancement projects, and generate over $1.5 billion in state and local tax revenue. And whereas American offshore and onshore energy of all types can be explored, developed, and delivered in a responsible manner while also simultaneously protecting our environment. And whereas it is in the best interest of South Carolina to support safe and responsible exploration, development, and delivery of all energy resources and the construction and maintenance of associated infrastructure in order to continue to grow the economy. Now therefore be resolved that we, the members of Pickens County Council, support the pursuit of a comprehensive, America First energy policy to ensure job growth, a strong economy, a much needed, and much needed tax revenues, and improve the security of our citizens, including through the safe and responsible development and delivery of the nation's offshore and onshore energy resources. Be further resolved that we, the members of Pickens County Council, urge the United States Congress to support federal revenue sharing legislation, legislation, excuse me, that would provide South Carolina and its coastal counties with a 37.5% share of federal revenues generated by outer continental shelf energy activities. Be further, be further resolved that Pickens County Council, through its Clerk to Council, transmit duly authenticated copies of this resolution to the President of the United States, the United States Secretary of the Interior, the Director of the United States Bureau of Ocean, Ocean Energy Management, the Majority Leader of the U.S. Senate, the Speaker of the U.S. House of Representatives, each member of the South Carolina Congressional Delegation, and the local press.
I'll second your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second, my Councilman Bowles. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the resolution just so slightly, next to the last paragraph. Since we are in Pickens County, and I'm looking out for the best interest of Pickens County, I would like to scratch the word coastal out, and it just read, I'll pick up, that would provide South Carolina and its counties with a 37.5% share. And that's just one of those.
I'll second that. Amen that way.
Everybody's got the same thing. All right. An amendment to take out and its coastal counties.
Just coastal.
And its coastal. Words, and its coastal, Lee County, South Carolina counties.
Lee County, and coastal.
Just literally, scratch coastal.
Coastal. And its counties. There's been a motion in the second. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. And is there any other discussion on the, the resolution as presented and amended? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and motion carries. Thank you guys very much, and we'll get this sent to you and to everybody else and their brother, apparently.
Perfect.
Thank you so much for taking your time to be here, and Representative Hyatt, thank you so much for coming to speak. And Madam Clerk, if you'll also express our thank you to Congressman Duncan for his letter of acknowledgement and support.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it.
Now move on to item number 10. This is first reading entitled only of an ordinance to amend Article III and Article IV of the Pickens County Code of Ordinances related to multifamily dwellings per the planning commission's recommendations that you guys got a copy of. I need a, a motion in a second that this constitute first reading.
Motion.
Motion, my Councilman Feumster.
I'll second.
Second, my Councilman Bowles. Any discussion?
Yeah. There were a few things that had concerns, or, but since this is entitled only, we'll say it.
It's entitled only, this is, and this is for the Project Third?
With concerns, I think it was probably more appropriate for the next reading.
Yeah, yeah. Let me have it written in the specifics.
See what it says, yes. Any other discussion? All right, all those in, was there a motion in a second? All those in favor of this first reading entitled only, signify by raising your hand? Motion carries. Item number 11, annual update on the Committee of the, Committee, on the Committee of the Whole Logs. All right, so I would like to make a motion that we move forward, all of the items on the Committee of the Whole Logs, except for item number 106, which is the VA van, because it's already been provided and was at no cost to us. It was...
State's [inaudible].
Right. And also item number 101 on the prison ministry.
And also 103 toward the jail. We've already done...
Oh, toward the new jail. Yeah, we toured it. We could go again. Okay. All right, item number, including item number 103, amend it to that. So we've got removing 106, 101, 103. Do you guys see anything else that we need to take off?
99 can go off. We've already got that. We've, we're pretty much bidding out that this month, right?
Sure.
99. Madden Bridge is bidding out this month.
Yes, sir.
So we're done with that committee.
All right, number 99.
We still want to talk about the special outdoor events ordinance?
I, I'll, I'll be happy to make the recommendation. What number is that?
72.
I'll make the recommendation to take 72 off as well.
77 with the lake level concerns, they're about to implement a plan that I think is going to actually help the lake by about two feet, and their management of that, and hopefully that'll get implemented. It's supposed to be up until July. Best case scenario, it'd be a four-foot. It looks like it's going to be two-foot. So this is actually the first positive step after, since 2011.
Army Corps is going to do that.
We can leave it on there if you'd like, in case they don't, which is possible.
All right.
Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
Anything else? I'll make this motion here, but I need to restate it.
What about 81?
Do you want to take the...
Didn't we do that?
Tabled it.
Did we do that on number 81?
81.
Discretionaries are still pending, but if you remember, some of you, we talked originally about an alternate route that we found in our existing ordinance.
So keep it in there.
Okay. All right.
The clerk points out 102 technically could go away. That was the 2018 funding. There'll be a new cycle starting in January.
Go ahead and take off 102, 2018.
Yeah.
Number 102?
153 extension, that's already...
That's in my book. That's why I know we still...
Yeah.
That has to do with the state, state infrastructure bank.
Is that the 183 project?
It's combined.
It's combined with, it's extended.
I remember.
All right, y'all good with those? Let me, let me restate this. So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward all of the Committee of the Whole Items, except for item number 106. items except for item number 106, the VA van, number 101, the prison ministry. I didn't write what they were. Number 103, tour of the jail, number 99, review of Madden Bridge project, number 72, outdoor special events, and number 102, which is the 2018 accommodation status. So, we have a motion forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Bowers. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right. On to item number 12. This is a second reading of ordinance number 556 to develop jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Oconee County. Such industrial business park to be at the time of its initial development geographically located in Pickens County and to include certain property now to be owned by or a company known to the county at this time as Project Print or its signee and established pursuant to Section 4-1-170 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, as amended to provide for a written agreement with Oconee County providing for the expenses of the park the percentage of revenue allocation, the distribution of fees in lieu of ad valorem tax to specify the distribution of fee in lieu of ad valorem property tax revenue in connection with such park to taxing entities within the county to authorize the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit and reimbursement agreement binding between the county and Oconee County and matters relating thereto. I ask for a motion in a second that constitute the second reading of ordinance number 556.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Feimster, second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Item number 13, this is the second reading and addendum resolution of an ordinance number 559 authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement binding between Pickens County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project KB. Acting for itself, one or more subsidiaries, affiliates, successors, assigns, lessors, or other project sponsors pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to certain facilities in the county, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project and other matters relating thereto. Ask for a motion in a second to constitute second reading of ordinance number 559. Councilman Bowers, the motion. Second by Councilman Feimster. Is any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand and that motion carries. Item number 14, we have on the consent agenda. Is this, Mr. Ruff, we can't, we can't add items to the consent agenda at this point?
Not at this point, no. You can do that during motion period of new business unless you wanted to make a motion to suspend the rules and do that, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Councilman White, yeah, I forgot. Councilman Whitehurst makes a motion to suspend the rules.
Second that.
Second that. All those in favor of suspending the rules so we can go back into new business, signify by raising your hand. That motion carries. Okay. So, we're now back into new business for a moment. Do you want me to, do you want me to do this? Do the...
Oh, that's not in there. Yes, yes.
So, you want to make a motion?
Yeah. Make a motion to add to committee of the whole a discussion of Greer Drive.
I'll second that.
For maintenance, minimum maintenance discussion.
Motion, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. That motion carries. Okay. So, now, I want, I want to make a motion to add discussion with state delegation. He's not here. I was going to look right at him when I did it. To have a discussion with state delegation as part of committee of the whole on the election in our election commission.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right. Now, we'll enter into item on consent agenda.
Is that something we've handled before?
Mr. Chairman, since we're on this, I want to add that we add the community cap programs to the committee log as well if I could.
So, community cap program.
Second, I have no idea what cap is. My wife's a big fan, so. If I can't, I can't not second or vote for that. Otherwise, I don't know.
All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right. So, the, to vote on the consent agenda in its entirety as we have with the Greer Drive, community cap, community cap programs and the election, meeting with the election commission and state delegation, all those in favor, I need a motion in a second on that.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers, second by Councilman Hudson. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries.
Do we need to make a motion to reinstate the rules?
Second.
Do you?
You don't need one. No.
Second.
He's just generally speaking.
Generally speaking, okay. Motion to reinstate the rules, second by Councilman Hendricks. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand and that carries. Okay. Now, we're back on track. Wow.
Thank you.
Now, item number 15, thank you for everybody's patience and everybody's looking like they're deer in the headlights, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we go into executive session. For economic development, Project Pine, Project Pobena, Project W2, Project KB, Project Print, contractual issues for George's Creek, legal issues, boards and commissions, and those vacancies, if we could, after short research, Mr. Chairman. Do I have to do them all? Okay.
Break, give them a whole break.
Contractual issues, George's Creek, civil legal issues, legal advice, cemeteries, boards and commissions, boards, ATAX. I don't have that page. Alcohol and drug, behavioral, health, Appalachian Council, governance, assessment, appeals, bifurcation committee, Bethlehem, Roanoke Water, Construction Board of Appeals, Cultural Commission, easily...
And we'll call us back into our regular session out of executive. We have a couple of items that we need to take action on. The first is first reading of an ordinance to authorize the conveyance of George's Creek, Creighton Creek, gosh, this is mouthful, to authorize the conveyance of George's Creek, Creighton Creek sewer infrastructure and allocated capacity to easily combine utility and matters relating thereto. Ask for a motion in a second that constitute first reading.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Bowers, second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On boards and commissions, motion to appoint Michael Clark and Paul McGuffin to the grievance committee. I'll make that as a motion out of the executive session.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand and that motion carries. Councilman Bowers.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Roy Costner to the Performing Arts Center Board, Chris Bowers to the Performing Arts Center Board, Wes Hendricks to the Hagan Mills Board, Carl Hudson to the Hagan Mill Board, Trey Whitehurst to the Museum Board, Ninsley Feimster to the Museum Board.
All right. There's a motion based on those recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Feimster.